It's eight o'clock, we have a phone, we'll go ahead and call the workshop session order.
No.
Mayor Council, we have an item on your agenda tonight related to an interlocal agreement with Denton County. They are providing funding for aesthetic improvements on the I-35 enhancement. And I thought it'd be interesting, you've seen a lot of this already, but I thought it would be good to go back and just review what that aesthetic program looks like. And so Mika is going to walk through that presentation with you.
Good evening. As Donna said, we just want to recap where we've been with our aesthetic package and where we are right now with the construction of the highway, and how the funding is coming along, and what we are doing basically with that funding. So if you recall, you saw this about two years ago, this is before the decision was made to have a Phase One and a Phase Two of the highway. So we, at the time we were developing this plan, we assumed that all the bridges were going to get done, and all the bridges were going to get improved. So we developed a whole package and theme for the entire corridor within Lewisville. And again, just I want to go through this very quickly because this is repetitive, and I'm sure you do recall that we had a theme down south, the Parks theme, and then we had the middle section, which was an Old Town theme, and then we have the Lakes theme, which was the northern part of Lewisville. So basically, the idea was, after the highway is done, if anyone is driving through Lewisville, it's very identifiable that you know you are in Lewisville because of some of these aesthetics packages that we have placed in the highway. And again, at the time when the design was being done, when we were working on this plan, the highway was in what we call flux, it was changing a lot. And so at that time, we had, we were going to have more underpasses where the highway was going to be over the streets, and now we're actually having more bridges versus underpasses. So at this point, the only two underpasses that we are going to have ultimately will be one at existing Business 121 and I-35, and the other one will be the 407. So those will be the only two underpasses. All the other intersections will be bridges, which actually is nicer for us because you can have a lot more aesthetics with a bridge versus an underpass, and it's more visible. The three bridges that are actually going to be affected in Phase One are Fox Avenue, and Fox is not going to be what we call the ultimate construction. So basically, the Highway Department is going to improve it some, but then for the second phase, they're going to come back and redo it again. So there's going to be some basic improvements put in, and then come back again and do the final improvement. But what we're putting in right now, the money that we're going to be spending is not going to go away. So what they're putting away right now on this section of the highway that they're improving, or that section of the bridge, is going to stay. So we're not going to be wasting our money. So any place that we thought, if we put some improvements in, the Highway Department's going to come back and redo it again in whatever five, seven, 10 years, whatever we think Phase Two is going to be, we really didn't put that much emphasis on, because we didn't want to spend a million dollars and then 10 years later rip it out.
Now, when you're saying they're going to come back and redo Fox, they're not going to redo so much the going over the freeway as there are the ends of it, right? In Phase Two?
Correct. In Phase Two, but the bridge itself will be expanded.
Right. But I'm saying the width of the bridge and stuff going over the freeway is going to be done in Phase One. What they're doing in Phase Two is the ends of the bridge.
No, we'll actually expand it.
Yeah.
The bridge will actually, they're building about two-thirds of the width in Phase One, and then they'll add the remaining one-third of the width for Phase Two.
Okay. But they want to tear it down, do you think?
No, but they will have to tear down the part that they're building in Phase One, they'll simply add to it.
Any money that's being spent now will be for the long haul.
Okay.
It will be expanded.
Say that, just checking.
Yes.
So on the Park section, which had the Hebron Parkway, basically the I-30, 40, and Corporate, is not going to be affected. So, so those, we're not dealing with those. So the first, first section that's going to be impacted is Fox, which is in our Old Town section. And the themes that we had created for Old Town, it was more of a Old Town look, basically, brick pavers, having that, that Old Town, arches, that, that look for Old Town. If we were going to have any, any designs on the embankments of the highway, we were going to have the Old Town design issues developed, that was part of the Old Town character. So for instance, on Main Street, when we do Main Street Bridge in Phase Two, this is what you're going to see on Main Street.
Pardon me, but this is locked down in concrete?
I'm sorry.
Just the design?
It isn't, actually. The thing is that, I guess one good thing that came out of going from Phase One and a Phase Two is that you have an opportunity to review again for Phase Two. So anything that doesn't get done in Phase One, and we think it's going to be again five, seven, or 10 years until Phase Two is done, then you can come back and revisit this, and if you want to change, you absolutely can change. And again, no money is being spent right now, so that's, that's an advantage. So Fox was going to be a fairly limited improvement that we were going to do on Fox, so actually we were just going to have basically enhanced sidewalks with showing brick pavers and enhanced lighting on the bridge. And this is what they're going to do right now with the, with the improvement. So basically, what you see here is what you're going to get on Fox, on the section that they're, the two-thirds that they're going to build, this is what you're going to get.
You might talk about the cage.
I was going to ask about the cage.
Yes, we are, and actually, we had asked them to send some graphics of that, because, and I'll go back to that when we talk about 407. Because we knew 407 was going to be the first section that's going to be completed, we had completed the construction plans for 407 to our design standards. All the other intersections, we have not done construction plans, we're letting AGL, which is a contractor, actually draw up the construction plans based on our design. So we basically wait on them to get us information. So in this, in this case, they have provided some information to us about what they're going to do primarily, but the design of what we call the cage, the pedestrian, the variant that we have for pedestrian crossings, because that bridge is, is going to impact the school district, the school, two schools that are on the other side of the freeway, they have not provided that graphic. But what we are going to do, instead of the cage that you have right now, you're going to have a tubular steel barrier, so basically a very nice wrought iron fence that's going to be tall enough, and it's going to have some design that it will not allow people to jump over it, so it's tall enough so it won't, the kids won't be able to climb through it, or climb over it, or even throw things over it. That's what the Highway Department's telling us. So it's actually going to be very simplified, but very, very aesthetically pleasing on the side that pedestrians are crossing on that section. It's not going to be covered like it is right now, but again, it's going to provide a very strong barrier between the pedestrian and the bridge. That section, what the other thing we've been trying to do for, on all the bridges, that we would have a wider sidewalk on one side of it, so all these three bridges that are being constructed are going to have a 10-foot sidewalk on one side, and a 5-foot sidewalk on the other side. So there's a much wider sidewalk for pedestrian crossing.
Before you get away from that picture, the future expansion you were talking about, could you go into that briefly? On which side of the bridge, or both sides, does that take place?
I think it's going to be on the west side, right, David? The expansion will be on the west side.
Yes, and then originally expanded to the north as well, with, in terms of width.
Right.
So they'll add another lane later, on the north side, or two lanes?
I assume they had a cost effect.
Yeah, I think it's going to be, it'll be four lanes undivided now, and then in the future phase, there's a small median, so it's still four lanes, but we had a median.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I didn't hear you.
In Phase One, we have four lanes undivided, and then in the Phase Two, it becomes similar to this photo here, where you've got a narrow median, so they widen it a little bit. It's still going to be four lanes in Phase Two, but it'll be wide enough to add this median in the center.
Why, why do we not want it tethered? I understand you don't need the cage, but with the school, I mean, that thing is used heavy, nine months out of the year, in the morning and the evening. And if you look at the crossing on Collins Street on I-30, they've got it covered just so that you can walk across I-30 to the football stadium and the baseball field.
You are correct, Mayor. They have their aesthetic package included, these canopy, so it's not a continuous cover, it's just they've got these, these different canopies that you can walk under and move through.
Like a pergola?
Didn't see them.
Yeah.
Well, it's almost complete, it's like they have a foot or two between each canopy that's not covered, it's all across.
But is it like a pergola cover, or is it a solid roof?
It's not solid, it's got a, it had a foot break, and then it'll, maybe two foot.
And then it'll be solid again?
Where it is, covering it is solid.
Okay, it's not like a pergola?
No, it's solid, probably as wide as this table.
And then a break, and then another.
Yeah, yeah.
It almost, you know, I guess, like, I mean, it almost looks like, initially, I thought they're having some kind of a station, like a rail, it almost looks like a bus station, just on.
Right. Kind of like our rail stop station.
So, I think in this case, one, the fact that it's going to be again changed in several years, and two, that.
That's going to be changed, you said, on the north side?
Right.
This is on the south side.
Yeah, but they're going to put that barrier all the way through, of course. And then they have to take down, you know, pieces of it, but it won't be as much.
Why aren't they putting a cover over the south side?
It just, I mean, that, that design, just to be honest, never came up, and we were just.
A lot of person worked into that, because that's going to be used nine months out of the year, five days a week.
We can certainly, we can certainly do that. Absolutely.
Twice a day, and get the school district to get behind you and push it. Was that when they, excuse me, you mentioned the wrought iron tube or something?
Right.
How tall would that be? Six, eight feet?
Yeah, 10 feet, actually.
10 feet? And would it be in lieu of the?
It'd be in lieu of the cage, but it would come up, it would.
To the inside.
To the inside.
Yeah.
So it'd have the same impact, I mean, the mayor's right, it's not a complete cage, but it would have the same impact.
Just for going over, but it's not for covering it.
Correct.
Well, the one they have now, it's covered.
Right.
It's just chain link fence over it.
I understand.
So.
And they're not covered when you go to it.
Right.
Right, it's still up there.
I just compared it to what they did on I-30. That's probably before the baseball games, and they've done the football, isn't it?
Correct.
And they paid a lot of money for that, I guess that's the difference. And maybe in the tourist hill, they did the, I don't know.
So the more, what we're looking at, or the mayor, what you're looking at is more like weather protection, basically, so you walk before sun and rain and.
It's not that it's just complete.
No, no, no.
How much you were asking, do you really want it to be covered?
Some type of thing, some of what they've got at our rail station now, or like they have over on 30 in Collins, I think they have it at Collins, and then I think they have it the street to the east of Collins, I can't remember what street.
Center Street.
Center.
You can certainly ask the question and find out the cost.
Okay. Let them do it, I bet they pay for those.
Probably could.
I bet state pays for those.
So basically, again, this is the 10-foot sidewalk, so on one side of it, we're going to have a 10-foot sidewalk.
So the wire sidewalk is on the north side?
No, the wire sidewalk would be on the south side, which is what it is right now.
Make sure.
Right, which is what it is right now.
Suddenly, I've got the wrong picture.
So just, just a graphic, again, you know, this is, this is eventually what it's going to look like, so the barriers and the look that aesthetic department is going to have in the Old Town section. So this is now, we're moving into the Lake character zone, which includes the 407 bridge and the Garden Ridge bridge. Both bridges are being done in Phase Two. 407 is going to be done to ultimate complete condition. So what they're going to build on 407, and again, is the first phase of the highway, it's full-blown going right now, and it's going to be constructed hopefully in the next two years, so what you see is what you get, pretty much, that is the ultimate condition. So because we knew that at the time that the designs were being completed, we put a lot of time and effort in making sure that that intersection is going to stay done right, but that was going to be basically the showcase for the rest of the intersections. So we actually commissioned PB, that was doing the identity part for us, to actually do the construction plans that we could incorporate into the bid documents for Textod. So what went to bid, what AGL picked up, all the documents that were in there are our documents and our design. So basically, the elements are going to include the, a different color on the, on the light poles, and on the, on the poles that we're going to have banners, that we have the ability to hang banners. The sidewalk is going to have a wave kind of an action look, so everything that's in this two bridge, they are going to relate to the lake and the lake character. So we picked up the sailboats, the birds, the fish, and everything that's related to the lake. Again, this is another graphic, primarily the wider sidewalk, the 10-foot sidewalk, and again, this is an underpass, so you're going under the highway on 407. The planters, the, you know, the columns on the, on the highway they're marching through, these colors that you see here are not the true color, it's not the sky blue, it's more like a gray steel blue, because we wanted a color that would be timeless, so you know, so it won't fade later on, so it's a little darker blue. It actually looks really pretty. David and I make routine visits to Textod's yard and make sure that all the, everything is being cast correctly. David, more than me, he takes his tape measure and measures everything, makes sure everything's right.
Good judgment.
So another image, so basically, the sidewalks are going to have a stone look, now, not, this, this were like more pebbled stone, actually, what we have right now in our design is more like an Austin stone, mainly because these were, remember, these are all cast concrete, they're not real stone. So what they were going to do is cast it and then paint it, and then it was going to add to our maintenance, if we were going to go with this look of a stone. And also, it was going to cost a lot more, because it was a lot more labor intensive to paint these little pebbles. So we decided, actually, our consultant recommended we go with more of an Austin stone look, that's going to be a lot less maintenance, and again, it's more timeless, because it doesn't have as much design on it. And then we thought the design on this, on the pavement is, you know, is enough to kind of provide that wave action versus having it on the walls and on the pavement. What you're going to see on the embankment of the highway is going to be the, the lake look, which is a lot, birds, fish, sailboats. These designs are going to be incorporated both in Garden Ridge and 407. So on 407, it's going to be under the bridge, on Garden Ridge, it's going to be basically on the bridge and on the sides of the highway. We have more, more fish and birds on this 407 side, and we have more sailboats on the Garden Ridge side, because you're closer to the, to the lake at that point. All the planting, we have, we have created a plant palette for planting landscaping along the highway. We have used a lot of sustainable, as much as we can, zero scapeing, and as much as we can, indigenous plants to this area. So it's going to be water efficient, it's going to be very easy to maintain. This is the Garden Ridge, this decision was made very, very late, at the, almost right before the highway went under construction. If you recall, there were a lot of discussions with Textod about having another crossing, so the decision was made to have the Garden Ridge go over instead of under, so there won't be another rail crossing. So basically, this is, this is a graphic, this is what you're going to see when the highway is done. Garden Ridge Bridge is also going to be done to its ultimate construction, so we are, we are putting in as much effort into it as possible. So this is the, this is going to be the bridge, again, carrying the same theme as the wave action and the stones and the colors. Another view, and here you could see some of the images on the highway, if you can, like these birds on this side, this is, this is where dedication that was given to the city, so this is going to be a basically kind of a nice park, open space in this area. This is a sign, and again, this is something that, that we can actually revise the design at this point, we are not locked into this, but this is something that our consultant had provided, and they have basically created this look, and if you want to go with that, we can, but we have an ability to change that, if you want to do that, if the council would like us to take a, take another look. But we wanted something very subtle at every intersection that would denote Lewisville, that you are in Lewisville. And again, remember, once you put something up there, it needs to be timeless, because it needs to carry through for the next 20, 30, 40 years, and you don't want to change it all the time. So the more simple, the better, actually.
And that is something we'll bring back to you, Council, for you to give some more consideration to.
Is that, is that Garden Ridge?
This is Garden Ridge.
Yeah, I don't know if you've had a chance, Mika, but if you take 1171 out to that brand-new development on the far west side of Flower Mount, just.
Past two RIT.
Yeah, yeah, just the development entrance sign is this rusted metal and steel, and it's massive, I mean, it, it, it's gorgeous.
You have to ask my dog how much he spent on that. I'll check with him, with that system, I don't know.
Don't worry, look at doing those signs, I don't know that we need those at every bridge, that one, of course, because you're coming into Lewisville. But when you get to Valley Ridge, either way, you're not coming into Lewisville, I mean, you've been in Lewisville for a long period of time, same thing with Fox.
Yeah.
I don't know that you need one, maybe on the southern end and the northern end, but I don't know that you need them.
Right, actually, and mayor, we don't. We don't have it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying, I don't want to ever want, okay.
On some of them, on the bridges, we have the little signs that hangs from the bridges, basically, that we can either say Lewisville, or we can have the name of the street, so we need to make a decision what we want. So you see, so on all the bridges, we have the little hanging signs.
That might be something that you want to consider, remember, we've had discussion about replacement of our other gateway signs, not related to I-35. So when we look at design of this gateway sign, we might want to consider that for the other gateway signs too, something similar.
Right, that's a very good point, because we could be very consistent on a lot of our gateway signs.
That's what I'm worried about.
Too consistent?
Well, you start with this, and now you've set the benchmark, and everything needs to be consistent with whatever this is, so.
Well, common element maybe, but consistent, I mean, you're implying you use the phrase common element.
Yeah, that, that would be a better.
Understood.
Now, on the side, I'm sorry, go back on the side, where you said they donated to the city? Is that on the rails, is that on the west or east side?
It's on the other side, yes.
Which side?
On the west side.
So it's on the west side?
This is, yeah, so this is where the station is, so this is going to be right here.
Okay. Does the station, does DCTA, did they get all of that property over there now, so they can park on both sides if they need to?
They, no, what they have right now is what they own, actually, I think, and Steve probably is, can explain that, they are asking for some more parking on the core property, not on their property.
Which is already built, but it's already built.
Yeah, I've seen that new parking.
It's recreational parking.
Okay.
Basically temporary.
But there's not many room for them on the north side of that, where it comes in and everything?
At one point, Mayor, we were going to not have what we call the jug handle, what we have right now, because this is going to be pretty similar to, you know, a little more improved, but very similar to what we have right now, which is basically, you come in, you cross the bridge, you go around, and this is the DCTA, that you get into their parking lot, and then you come in and go the other way, and go north on the, to access the trailer, the mobile home park, you know, some, some of that area. So at one point, we thought we're going to have this area dedicated to the city, and we could use it for something, but with this design, with the bridge, it's not going to work, so pretty much it's going to be, belong to Textod, even at the ultimate construction. And then the other thing we were looking at, when it was going to be an underpass, we were going to have under the freeway parking. And, and so, so this, basically with this design, we're not going to have under the freeway parking. But it's a much, much more creative design.
Lots of pine trees all of a sudden. Love how we have all these pine trees now.
Actually, yeah, that's the, that's one of our color, one of our plant palettes, but we, we can, you know, I know Claude actually was, was not partial to pine, so he wanted that eliminated, so we certainly can do that and replace it with some other trees.
It's just a pretty picture.
Exactly. And actually, our, our consultant had, had spent some pine, because, because we have it at 121, and they thought it's indigenous to the area, so.
Southern, too, it's, there you go.
Fine, a good argument, but then. Anyway, so this is, this is our cost estimate, this is again based on when we were designing it, and this, so this is two years ago, when our, our consultant was looking at it and the elements we had, so we had, we had selected, every, every, every intersection, we had, we had a cost estimate on. 407, again, is, you can see in red, because this is a true cost, so we know our cost is going to be 1.6 million dollars, because we developed the construction plans. The 934,000 dollars, and again, I just, just to, just to recap or go back to two years ago, we brought two options to you, because we thought 1.65 was kind of a large number, and so we did a little value engineering, or we asked our consulting to kind of go back and look at some elements that we can take off to get it closer to a million dollars. So this number, 934,000 dollars, is with getting, you know, taking some of the aspects out, but when we presented it to the council two years ago, you guys decided and told us, no, let's just go with, you know, with the design that we have. So this is the 1.6 million, is what we have right now with Textod, and we're going to develop a contract with Textod on that 1.6 million. Now, the other two intersections, Fox Avenue at about a million, and I'm thinking Garden Ridge probably is going to be very close to 407. We had estimated at one point, about right at $1 million, when it was an underpass, but when it's a bridge, it's going to have more elements to it, so in my opinion, it's going to be closer to that 1.6 million for 407. They, I don't know if you jump in, or Eric, if you think that's probably the same aesthetic is probably going to cost us the same. Similar cost. But these two, AGL is actually going to design it, and AGL is going to give us a cost estimate. So they have not done that yet, once they give us the cost estimate, we'll bring it back to you. So tonight, on your agenda, is basically a funding agreement with, with Denton County. So Denton County, several years ago, when there was talks of redoing the highway, they had set aside $5 million just for the aesthetics part of the highway improvements. And so this funding agreement is with Denton County to basically provide that money to Lewisville to develop these aesthetic packages for these intersections. Another million dollars is what the city had budgeted, the way the agreements, or the way we, we black children, I think the way the agreement reads, is that the county money will be spent first, and if there's any need for additional money, then the city's money will be put in. So at this point, we think that for these, definitely for these three intersections that we have, the county money will be sufficient.
I think it's bond money that's been set aside, and so in the end, if it's not expended, it would be reallocated to other street projects.
That was my question, was, since we've seen an inflation, and we're going to have more bridges, would the county be interested, or would we be willing to ask the county for a little bit more because of that? But if it's bonds, then we're kind of in bonds.
Well, our bond's bond money.
Okay.
And that's their bond money.
I think that's their bond money as well.
We can always ask.
You have to cross that bridge when we get to.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Commissioner Mitchell has always been good to us.
So what we have is basically right now, just a process, tonight you have the funding agreement with Denton County to provide that $5 million, or this is a reimbursement resolution, basically, so, so we will, we will pay, and then they will reimburse us back.
So you'll see this coming back to you with supplemental appropriations, because it is reimbursable. So as we get the LaPapa, we have the LaPapa agreement, so those will come back individually for each one of the projects, with 407 being first. We should see that shortly, David.
Shortly soon, we'll just drop this one ramp up, come back very soon with the LaPapa on 407.
So the 407, the 1.6 million dollars will be coming to you very quickly, AGL is developing cost estimate for final design for Garden Ridge and Fox, so we'll be bringing those cost estimates back to you, then we'll work with Textod to develop the LaPapa, the local project advance funding agreement, and to look at paying for the aesthetic. So we feel like for definitely for this phase of the highway, we can live with the money that we have, we just need to think about it when the next phase comes in, what we want, so we should be in good shape with this piece. Be happy to answer any questions, again, of course, David, David, if you don't, if all of us can answer questions.
Questions? Thank you, Mika.
At this time, we need to take a look at the agenda, and we'll go through that. Mayor, let me step out for a moment.
Questions or comments on public hearing, item one?
That is after 50% of the space, is that the upper limit for that storage?
Correct. Again, your SGP, I think, is getting you a much enhanced development than you would have seen without the SGP.
I don't have a question.
I'm sorry.
I don't have a question.
Yeah, yeah, they, it worked out well for us.
Item two.
The doorstep done a very good job.
Yeah, but, been nice to see those. Item two, public hearing. Item two, public hearing.
We have had a number of questions related to this item, and Mr. Polito is going to be doing a PowerPoint presentation for you during the regular meeting.
I would like to comment. I would like to give kudos to the department, and specifically, the inspection crew that caught this item. I think they're doing an outstanding job, and I just would wish that they keep up the good work.
He's sitting here listening to you, so I'm sure he appreciates the, the, Tim Polito. I'm sure he appreciates your commitment.
And their comments on two, before we move to three. Item three, public hearing, property tax rate. Other than time in 20 years? Item four, public hearing, annexing 156 acres.
We have two public hearings that are identical, back to back. One thing that the statute does require is for us to specify the service plan. And so I will be explaining it to you. And now, my attorney tells me that I have to say the exact same thing two times in a row. So when I explain that, service plan, I will do it on item four and item five. And basically, the service plan is, you know, the same service level that we provide to every other section of Louisville.
We have to do that in a certain timeframe? Or how does, how does that work?
Immediate.
It's an immediate?
It's immediate.
Okay. Even if they don't have any infrastructure?
They'll have it, that's part of this development.
Is there a particular reason why we're doing them back to back as opposed to one meeting and another, like we do most public hearings, where there's a requirement of two?
The developer that we're working with, they're looking at a closing date in October. And so we're trying to move this forward quickly, and the state law doesn't require that there be a number, a certain number of days in between the public hearings.
Public hearing five, so recap of four. All right, hearing nothing, consent agenda. Item six. Item seven.
This is the item that Nikki just spoke about.
Item eight. Item nine. Item 10. Item 11.
I've got a question on item 11, but the folder disappeared, so I'm trying to regroup here from, I can't see anything. I'm going to close up.
Nice to see our grant writers, or?
Well, from my notes, while I'm waiting for this to load, on, in 1102, in the agreement on page 25, item 5.5, it's a small technicality, but it says to FM 3030.
So it's a typo.
New road.
Can I build a new road?
Then called 30.
Why?
I was thinking, maybe there's a road north of 34, or south of 34. Maybe south would be 3030.
We'll make sure we get that corrected.
Okay. And I think it's in there twice. I can't get the document, oh, no, I probably didn't.
Is it in the agreement?
Yeah, it's on page 25, so it's still part of the agreement.
Garnett's correct.
So, yeah, 5.5 says Old Orchard Lane, Valley Parkway, FM 3030. And then I think it, I thought it was in here twice, maybe not. No, it's on that one. Maybe it's just once. That's the note I wrote down this.
We'll make sure that we get it coming to you.
Okay. But it is the agreement, so.
Thank you, that's.
Technicalities.
Regular hearings. Item 13.
So, different name in years past. What was the name of it? Community showcase.
Community showcase, that's correct. This is the first year it's been hosted at the city in a while. I think it was at, when we had the old church building, it was their initial. It has been held with schools.
Which is why they're moving it, because of the bear line.
That's correct.
Okay.
One of the big things, too, is they, that they're trying differently this year is an evening event.
I don't think, I think it's been. Yeah, I think it starts in the afternoon.
Okay.
It was usually weekends, I think.
Okay, it's Thursday?
Correct.
Okay, I suppose it was Saturday.
Mayor, welcome back. We're just finishing up any conversation on item 14.
Okay, I need to go back, apologize. But I need to go back to consent agenda. Nine and 10, full, but I need to abstain from those. Thank you, TJ, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, Mayor. We're up to item 15, if you want to keep moving on.
And item 17. I think their staff had asked them to give you this and give you some alternate plans we have for Western Week.
Unfortunately, the timeline was extended again to the 25th. We had planned an advance for that situation. And so if we're not able to use the park at all for Western days, we will, the craft beer area was planned to be on the stage. If we can't have that on the stage, it will be at the same location it was last year, which is over in front of Center Hall. Any vendors that would have been in the park will be placed on Church Street. But Steve is going to do an update for you in the open session.
And I'm going to go back to the, to the public hearing. Did you talk about, did you mention this email that had been sent by, did I copy it?
I did not mention the email, Mayor, but I did say that Mr. Polito will be doing a presentation from.
Okay. If you will, I was giving copy of this email that was sent by Jennifer Whitaker. It was sent today, this afternoon. She's on the gas and oil advisory board. And she just wanted everybody to know that she is against it in her perspective, too.
How many are on the oil and gas advisory board?
How many on the oil and gas advisory board?
I believe in seven.
It's been, I think.
How many were opposed to it?
I just didn't go.
This is the only one that we've heard from.
We didn't take it to the board. They acted just in a blazery capacity to ordinance changes. So she kind of wrote that on her own behalf.
Ordinance requires it to come back to you.
Thank you.
I thought I'd be aware of it, because she'd asked that we make everybody aware of. Okay. Counsel, anything else? Julie? Leah? Tom? Come here, too.
Both the American Texas flag, led by Mayor Protem Gilmore.
Please stand and join me in a moment of silent prayer.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Threw it away.
Oh, it's still there.
Item one is a public hearing. Consideration of ordinance green and a special use permit request for a storage yard with greater than 10% outside storage on two tracks, totaling 10.436 acres. Zoned heavy industrial, located at the southwest corner of Riverview Drive and Jubilee Lane. Further identified as Riverview Industrial Park Edition, Lot 3, Block A, and Lot 4, Block A, as requested by Black Diamond Group Limited, the applicant on behalf of the owners. BOXX Modular Formula Nortex specializes in the manufacturing, sale, lease, repair, and renovation of modular buildings. The company presently operates out of three separate lots in the Riverview Industrial Park. The new site will allow for consolidation of operations onto one site and will serve as Box Modular's U.S. headquarters. Approximately 50% of the site will be used to house modular buildings that are either on display for clients to view, being prepped for a particular use or being serviced with leases that have expired. The SUP's development plan spans over 10 acres and proposes two permanent buildings, a 9,865 square foot front office and a 9,600 square foot service and repair building. The planning is only commissioned, recommended approval of the request by vote 40 at their meeting August 19, 2014. Recommendation of staff is that council approved the ordinance except for in the caption above. And I do have a card here filled out by Chris Rowe, who is here, he does not wish to speak, but is here to answer any questions he has. He is with the Black Diamond Group. Does counsel have any questions to ask? Councilman Ferguson, closed public hearing?
Yes, moved to closed public hearing.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, closed public hearing. Second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to approve the ordinance as stated.
Second.
Have a motion to approve as stated by Councilman Ferguson. Second is by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All, wait, counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas by granting a special use permit for a storage yard with greater than 10% outside storage located on Lot 3, Block A, and Lot 4, Eastern portion, Block A, of the Riverview Industrial Park Edition, containing approximately 10.436 acres, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two is a public hearing, consideration of issuing an amended permit for four existing oil and gas permits in consideration of a variance to Louisville City Code Section 7-607 regarding unanimous consent of property owners within 500 feet from an existing site located at 1645 McGee Lane, known as the Prologis Gas Pad, as requested by Peloton Land Solutions on behalf of Atlas Resource Partners LP. The applicant has requested the issuance of amended oil and gas permits for the four existing wells and permits at the Prologis Gas Pad located at 1645 McGee Lane. An amended permit is required, as the operator has added a compressor at the site, which has been deemed materially different from the activities covered by existing permits. Oil and gas ordinance requires that, in order to issue a permit, a public hearing must be held for an affirmative vote, if not less than three-fourths of the members of City Council's wells, the unanimous consent of property owners. Excuse me. Located within a 500-foot radius around said wells is obtained as the well bores are located within 500, 800 feet from the protected use. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a variance to the unanimous consent of property owners within the 500-foot radius as one protected use owner did not respond to numerous attempts by the applicant to contact them. Recommendation of staff that council approved the issuance of the amended oil and gas well drilling permits and approved the variances set forth in caption above. We'll convene back in regular session. Do have some cards filled out here on this. I do have Eric Head with Peloton Land Solutions, Inc. He is not, he does not wish to speak, but he is here to answer any questions if needed. He's also, and then also have a speaker card by Carla, and I apologize if I messed this up, Suzowski, who is with Prologis Amendix Gas, excuse me, no, she doesn't say who she's with. She's from 425 Houston Street, Fort Worth, Texas. And she does not wish to speak, but is here, also here to answer any questions on this item. And then I did have a speaker card, would like to speak, Mr. Steve Southwell, would like to speak in favor of. Mr. Southwell, if you'll come forward, give your name and address for record, please, sir.
Counsel, I'm Steve Southwell.
I'm sorry, I apologize, Steve. If you could, could you first let Fire Marshal Tim Hippelito give a presentation?
Yeah, absolutely.
I apologize, sir. Sorry, Tim, forgot, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wanted to give you just a brief presentation on this Prologis Gas Pad. It's been a pretty complex issue for us, so I was hoping maybe I can highlight some of the things that we've gotten to at this point and where we're at today. If you recall, we issued four gas well drilling permits and operating permits for the Prologis site in 2011. That's located out there on McGee Road. At this time, there's no new permits, but we're looking at having to issue an amended permits. And that's for the, a compressor that was added to the facility back when Titan owned the property. This compressor is required for them to operate the site in order to get the pressure up high enough to enter the Atmos line out along the freeway. So they need it to operate. They're hoping to put in, or they're going to put in a sound wall to keep the sound within our limits of our noise ordinance. It's a green sound wall, and I can go more into that later. And they're proposing just to put it on the west and the south aspect now, where the protected uses are. There's nothing on, no development on the other aspects, but they've agreed, and it's in their application and on their site plan, that should development occur in those other aspects. They'll then construct the wall and continue, basically circling the fort. Let's talk about the timeline. This thing has drug on, but we've worked really hard with the applicant, and I feel the applicant has worked with us to come up with something that's kind of neat. Again, this was developed and drilled in 2011 and 2012, and in September of 12, they sold Titan, the original developer, sold it to Atlas Partners. We discovered as staff on October 8th of 2012 that they put this compressor in. That compressor was never part of the original permit. So we asked them at that time to give us some, develop some site plans and show us how it affects it, the neighborhood and the areas around it. In 2012, December of 12, they gave us some proposals for a metal sound wall. We didn't like that. We didn't want a metal wall that would look not very aesthetically pleasing. So throughout 2013, we kind of went back and forth on various designs. What do we want as a city? What can be constructed and whatnot? Finally, in March of 14, we issued Atlas a notice, say, we got it, we got to move this forward. We need to have a permit in by June 1st. And on June 3rd, they did submit an application for a permit, and that's where we're at today. As far as the permitting goes, and really while we're here, the oil and gas ordinance tells us that if we deem as staff or as a city that the site or the operations have been materially different from what was approved originally, we need to go back and amend the permit. In order to do that, our only option really is to bring it back in front of council because it's within that 300 to 500-foot range, and we'll need the supermajority of council to approve that, and also 100% of the landowners that have a protected use within 300 to 500 feet to offer their consent. And there's a variance attached to this, as you well know, and I'll go over that in just a second. We did charge them a permit fee of $10,000. That's our standard oil and gas permit fee. There are four permits in play here, but we felt since it was for one compressor for all four sites, that the one permit and the $10,000 permit fee was appropriate. If you can see in front of you, I just took, we took a couple photos just to give you an idea of what this compressor is. This is the one, this is the compressor on site, and it has the temporary sound wall around it, and then an up-close shot of the compressor. It's a significant piece of equipment, and that's one of the reasons we deemed it materially different. The sound wall itself is kind of, I think it's a pretty neat product they've come up with. It's called a stramit board, and what it is, is they've taken, they take, it's environmentally green, they take the straw stubble after they've mowed and for hay, they take that leftover product and they compress it down to this super-dense product. So it's kind of leftovers, basically, out there that they're recycling. They're going to coat that in a stucco, which will make it waterproof. They're going to paint it tan, and we're going to put a big green band across the top of it. And we think that'll look pretty nice. It's got incredible soundproof or sound absorption radios or qualities. It also is pretty much fireproof because it's so dense. Our values are great. It's a really neat product, I think, and that's why we're in support of it. And I have some samples of it if you're interested. This next slide just shows you those rings of setbacks and the location. As you can see, there's three buildings or sites that are highlighted in red. Those are the affected, are, those are the uses that needed to offer their consent to this. On the northwest side, there's a home up there. That person did offer their consent. On the south side, there's two buildings that are owned, co-owned by two folks, or two gentlemen. One person did, of those two owners, one person did offer their consent, and they were unable to make contact with the second owner, Mr. Bushman. They've tried 14, the applicant tried 14 times over a two-month period to meet with Mr. Bushman to get his consent or offer, you know, that he's not in support of it. They basically weren't able to meet. They sent out numerous voice, you know, telephone calls, they visited their homes, they visited the buildings, they've sent out certified letters. They feel like they did everything they could to contact Mr. Bushman and, and, you know, get his input onto this product, onto this thing. And that's why we're asking for a variance on that, because they really just haven't been able to hear from him one way or another on it. I think it's important to note, though, that on the original permits back in 11, Mr. Bushman did offer his consent back then, but today they were not able to. So again, two of the three owners that are affected by this have offered their consent. The third one is just silent, and that's the variance that's there, that is requested of you tonight. And with that, trying to keep it brief, do you have any questions of me?
Tim, could you clarify the fact that the compressor, I believe, was actually added to the site by the prior owner?
Yes, it was put in by Titan, who was the original developer of the site, and they, I can specifically remember dealing with Titan and asking him about a compressor, and he said they were going to need one. Okay. And then low and behold, you know, roughly a year later, we're out there on a normal inspection and we discovered it. But I started dealing with Titan to address this issue. Titan sold to Atlas. A lot of the players changed, so it took a little time to get it all straightened out and to get to where we are, to where we can make some decisions on what to, what to construct out there and how to deal with this thing. So it wasn't, it wasn't Atlas that put this in, it was the original ones Titan.
So just to make sure I understood, you and staff talked to Titan before the original permit was issued and said, what about a compressor? Don't you need to put the compressor in this permit?
Correct.
And they said, no, we don't need a compressor.
Titan at that time did not feel that they were going to need to have a compressor.
So it was their choice not to put the compressor into the permit?
Correct.
Which if at the time they'd taken the staff and yourself and put the compressor in the permit, all these issues would have been resolved before the permit, initial permit was ever issued, is that correct?
I think that's fair to say. If they had proposed it, included it in the, a compressor in the original submittals, you would have debated it at that time and issued the permit or not.
So this is something that they brought upon themselves, not something the city added at a later date?
The original operator did, yes. But not the folks today. They kind of inherited this situation.
I'm sure all that was fully disclosed upon purchase. If it's not, I'm sure somebody's got a lawsuit against somebody for something for nondisclosure. That's corporate.
I don't know if they disclosed it or not.
I don't either.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Sure.
We did find out that they had this compressor on October 8th of 2012.
Yes, sir.
They're still currently operating today.
Yes, sir.
With, basically, the permit is not legal.
Yes, I would say that's correct.
At what point do we, obviously, we're taking steps tonight and, and moving in the proper direction, that time period that we've just dealt with, which is close to two years, what, when do we, when would we usually end, or would we step in and stop operations?
Yeah, I, there's no timeline of definitive thing, you know, 60 days or something like that. The way we traditionally or typically operate is that we work with our, we work with our develop, we work with our business folks. We would usually just issue citations typically under two circumstances. First, if it's just an imminent threat to fire life safety, you know, if the, these exit doors were padlocked, closed, we might issue a citation right then and there. Or if they're just ignoring us. Citation in our world and the fire prevention is a tool for compliance. We're trying to get compliance out there and make a safe thing. I did not issue them any citations because they were working with us, and it's been very complex. This has been a rough ride over these last two years, and you have my apologies for this not being resolved sooner. I certainly have some responsibility of that. But again, they were working with us, and I never felt that there was a need to issue the violation in order to gain compliance because we were working on getting compliance. It's not necessarily a punitive thing, but it's a tool to gain compliance.
Thank you.
You may ask any questions of Mr. Hippolito?
Mr. Hippolito, would you mind going back two slides, please? Uh, one more, and maybe another. Keep going. Where's your timeframe?
I'm not sure which ones to.
Timeline slide. There we go.
Timelines.
There we go, timeline slide. It'd help if I remembered the header. So, and I may be reading into this, so my apologies, and that's why I'm asking the question. So you received the December 2012, and then for a year till March 2014, you had various designs. The way I read that March 2014 is, you finally said, we're tired of this.
Pretty much told them, we've got to get this resolved, yes. And I gave until June 1st to...
That's not, that doesn't tell me a story of somebody who's working with us. That tells me a story that you finally had to put a stop to kicking the can down the road.
That's fair to say, because it had dragged on and it had taken up to that point to get to, you know, to this date. We needed to get resolution. But prior to that, again, we were going through different designs, and we as a city hadn't done this before. We weren't sure what we wanted to look at. Do we make it look like a building, for instance, with our 80% masonry? You know, they brought different ideas to the table. We rejected them, massaged them. That's, and with the corporate structure, I'm not trying to come up with excuses, they would have an idea, they got to get it through their corporate structure to see if it would work for them, and then present it to us, and we would say, no, we don't like that, or come back with this. So that was really the main thing. But it got to the point, yes, where we finally said, enough's enough. We need to get this resolved, and we need now.
So, so how many options did they bring to the table?
Sir, I don't remember exactly. I would say we saw half a dozen ranging from metal walls to tin building type of things. They, they sent us a product, an example, and we were almost there on this one. It was like a PVC plastic type of thing that was pretty neat, and we were, we were, I know Mr. Backus and I looked at it, and he thought it was, would be a good, a good fit. And we were almost going to approve that or, you know, offer it as, this looks good, let's take it to council. And they came back with this new product, this stramit, this green board stuff, which we thought, hey, that's, that's got some real advantages too, you know? So again, built in another few months there, switching from that to this.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions of Mr. Hippolito? Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
About when on the timeline did the stramit product show up?
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't...
About when on the timeline did the stramit product show up?
I would say probably around February, maybe the first of this year, a little bit later.
Okay.
This is springtime, and I'm sorry, I don't know that exactly, sir.
Any other questions of Mr. Hippolito? Thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. Okay, once again, Mr. Southwell, if you'd like to come forward and speak, sir, please. Apologize for the confusion there.
No problem. My name's Steve Southwell, 995 Downey Drive in Louisville. I just had a few comments here. I'm a member of the Oil and Gas Advisory Board. We did not convene on this. It's not part of our charter to actually review permits. We review the ordinance. So I'm speaking on my own behalf and not that group. I do support this permit request. I think they need this to get their gas to market, and I support it. I'm happy with all the sound wall and everything else. But I'm very frustrated with this situation because we had a company who knew better that we dealt with, and I was, I remember those conversations about those compressors and whether they needed it. What they said was they didn't. I think what we've got here is a situation where a company thought it was in their best interest to seek forgiveness instead of permission. And I think it sets a dangerous precedent to sit here and allow that. I think that Denton set a bad precedent in some of the things that they did, and now you see the pendulum swing the other way there. So I think they knew better. I hate to get to the point where we're granting this new permit without them curing the defect. I think it's a little bit like you catch your kid shoplifting a toy, and you let him keep playing with it because you were going to buy it for him for their birthday, you know? I think the proper thing to do here, and what I'm asking you to do, is table this for tonight, table this permit. Have the staff, go write them a citation, have it go to municipal court, let them plea it, let it go through that process, shut them down if we need to shut them down, let them come back next week after they fixed it. That's what I think should be done. And I would be totally in favor of passing it. But let's let them suffer a little penalty because they have, they've reaped the benefits of having this without a permit. They didn't pay their permit fee years ago. They got by without it. They were able to get that initial permit passed because it wasn't complicated by having this compressor on it. Who knows if it would have passed? There's also another issue, just of fairness to our other small businesses and homeowners. You know, I see situations and I hear of situations where a homeowner does something to their home, maybe without a permit, or a small business owner puts out a sign, it gets red-tagged. The city makes it go away. They don't get to drag on for two years saying, well, I intend to get around to getting a permit someday, so let me keep my sign out. One last thing, and I'll leave you to it. The idea that Atlas bought this well from Titan, Atlas is Titan. Atlas bought Titan, merged with Titan. You know, their press release from 2012 clearly points out, they bought the company, not the assets, they bought the company, they bought all the liabilities, all the history, everything. So Titan shareholders got shares in Atlas. They are the same. So let's not treat it like it's two different companies. They are the operator, they've always been the operator. They're responsible for this. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And to that point, I do want to state that Ms. Jennifer Whitaker did send council an email. She was also on the council, the Oil and Gas Permit Council, and she did send an email to council letting us know that she was not in favor of us approving this permit. That's the only two people we heard from on the council, but as, I will say too, that as Mr. Southwell stated, this was not taken before the council or the committee as an item for them to discuss or vote on or anything like that. Did anyone have any questions of either of the two other people, Ms. Carla Suzowski or Eric Head, that were here to answer any questions? Okay. CJ, entertain, motion close? Just close.
Yeah, motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to close public hearing, second by Councilman Tierney. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Councilman Gilmore, start off with you, sir.
I have to be in agreement with many of the things Mr. Southwell said. I was in those meetings as a citizen, and I do feel like we're shutting the door after the horse is out of the barn. I would like to ask council, council, is there a way if we put this, where we put a date certain requirement, and after that date certain, there would be a, there'd be a penalty, a fine attached to that for getting the remediated sound wall?
The fine would have, the fine would have to be attached to the code violation, so it would be a violation of operating without a valid permit.
So then we could say something to the fact that if that sound wall was not in place by this time, then all fees and fines accrued up to, or that could have accrued up to this point?
No, we'd actually have to write them tickets for that, citations.
But you could say a citation would be issued if not remediated by a date.
Okay, so we could, we could still put that citation down. Now, one thing they have done is that they have paid a $10,000 fee, is that correct, Mr. Hippolito, for the new sound wall?
Permit fee.
New permit fee for that? That is a permit fee. Now, that's not a citation, no, I understand that.
Let me just get clarification since you said, what is that permit fee for? Is it for the pump or for the sound wall? Is it for the pump or for the sound wall?
It's for an amended permit.
Is it for the compressor or is it for the sound wall? Or for both?
With change.
It's for an amended permit. The only permit that we have for oil and gas wells is basically a permit to drill and operate. So we don't, we don't permit the sound wall and have a fee just for that or anything else. It's one all-inclusive permit fee.
I'm sorry, councilman.
No, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
We did consider it materially significant change, too, and that's what's really kicking in this process.
Well, I, I would be, I would be comfortable with a 60-day window to get that sound wall up, since it's obviously custom material. At day 60 plus one hour, I would be really, really comfortable with a citation.
And removal of the permit.
I would like to know, is 60 days adequate for the company to produce this completion wall that you're talking about?
Would either one of you people, like, that filled out a speaker card, like to answer that question?
Maybe not, but two years and 60, two years and 60 days.
60 days has been plenty.
If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Carla Sikowski. I'm with Atlas Resource Partners in Fort Worth. Yes, 60 days is plenty of time. We've been told by our contractor it'll take about three weeks, so...
Thank you.
Well, I'd be glad to change my statement down to 30 days.
Are you saying you can have it done in three weeks?
Yes.
She says they can have it done in three weeks. I don't see a problem with 30 days.
I don't see a problem with 30 days. Well, then, Mayor, I move that...
Hold on just a second, let me make sure.
No, go ahead.
I think a couple others had some comments. Did anybody else have some comments that they wanted to make or anything on this right now?
On his motion?
No, he hadn't made a motion yet.
He hasn't made a motion.
Just a discussion.
I started to, and the mayor rightly stopped me.
Well, I had at least one.
Yeah, just real quickly. I'm okay with moving forward with the date that we set. Get the, the sound barrier and approve the amended permit on this particular case if we get this. Everything's set as the soon-to-be motion proposed. My concern is, I want to prevent something like this in the future. And if we can do so through procedures by giving the city manager the authority to step in and take the proper corrective action, so we don't run into this extended time period, this particular case almost two years, to get compliance quicker. And I think if we were to do that through procedures and not by the ordinance, it may be more expeditious.
We could do that by an administrative directive if you were to tell me to do so.
So be it. That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Rudy, do you have anything? Thank you, you had something.
Yes. I'll try to keep this brief. My brain's kind of been occupied by this topic since last Friday. When I first saw it on the agenda and began reading it, quite frankly, Atlas, my answer was no and no. No to both. We've got two requests here, not one. And I was opposed to both of them. At that point, I did talk to the city manager at length about this issue to better understand the timeline and how it evolved. And then I spent this afternoon with Mr. Apolito, again, understanding the timeline and how it evolved. The message that I don't ever want any operator to get is that you don't come into Lewisville and, as it was phrased earlier, do it and then ask for forgiveness. We don't play that way. We're not going to play that way. I do recognize, particularly having spent the time with the city manager and with Mr. Apolito, and again, with his presentation tonight, which was actually my request to have that presentation, because I wanted everybody else to understand what I had, you know, walked through with him earlier today. This is a, I will admit, a unique set of circumstances, or I would hope a unique set of circumstances. We have two different issues in play here. One is the permitting of, the sort of post facto permitting of a modification that, to set the record a little bit straighter, Titan said they didn't need, and initially their operations didn't require. So after the wells were punched and were flowing, they initially did not need the compressors. Their first guess was correct. However, what they should have foreseen, and we all probably could have guessed, is that pressures drop over time, and that a compressor sooner or later was going to be a necessity. Why they didn't come and request a permit for that is beyond me. Again, maybe it was thinking that they could get forgiveness rather than ask for permission. Quite frankly, if they'd asked for permission, I think it would have been granted. But the scenario they decided to play, I find pretty disgusting. But that's not the making of Atlas. That's the making of Titan. It's, it's a new, I understand that Mr. Southwell's comment that, in his mind, Titan is Atlas, Atlas is Titan. But when companies change hands, yes, you inherit all of the liabilities and mistakes and obligations and risks and benefits of the company you acquire. But it's not necessarily your creation. You may inherit it, but it's not your creation. After I thought through all of this, I was sure that I wanted to be able to say something from the dais tonight that would be not so much a message to you, although you're in the group, but a message to all operators, "We don't play this way in Lewisville. We're not going to do this." And while I can't imagine another scenario like this coming up, because it has two unique qualities Titan's making and what I believe was a sincere endeavor to make contact with one of three protected use property owners without response. Had you not made that sincere effort to the depth that you did, you would still be getting a no on one of your requests from me. But I think you made a sincere effort, and for that reason, I'm going to be in favor of granting both variances. But I retired from the oil and gas business. I worked for Arco Oil and Gas. And I know that you folks all talk to each other. So I'm going to tell you tonight, you go back, and when you talk to your friends, who are other producers and operators, let them know by the skin of your teeth. And that's all I have to say.
Councilman Bond, did you have anything else, sir?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to make a couple of comments on what Mr. Southwell said, what Councilman Gilmore had to state, as well as Councilman Tierney. I'll begin with Councilman Tierney's approach. And I guess it touches on Mr. Southwell as well. I, for one, did not become aware of this compressor issue until I got my agenda for this meeting, which was Thursday. And through discussions we've had, it turns out this has been an ongoing thing for, I'm hearing, from a year to two years, that the city has been dealing with this. So as far as I'm concerned, just going, on the going-forward issue, I would like to see some kind of administrative directive, as been suggested by Councilman Tierney, that this doesn't happen in the future. The city doesn't try to handle this for a year or whatever before getting some kind of going-forward operating message from the council. Now, to talk about who originated this problem and why it's before us today. I take the approach that Mr. Southwell does, that it's the same company. The people that benefited from this compressor pumping gas for two years has benefited that company or those companies, those stockholders. And the person, the people that come up short in this scenario is the city of Lewisville. I won't try to dissect whether it was a matter of not knowing the regulation, or, as Councilman Ferguson pointed out, well, it's just cheaper to go in the back door than to go in the front. So my message is the same as we've heard from the rest of the council and the citizens, that I, too, was totally against this coming in. Totally against it. One of the things that had to be clarified for me was that there was a sincere effort to contact this third party. And I've been assured at this point that a lot of effort has gone into that. So on signing off on the regulation that 100% of the affected parties sign off on this, I am for granting the variance in that case. But on the compressor and the wall, I stand with Councilman Gilmore that 30 days seems reasonable. And that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Gilmore. I just want to let the others, said they want to have something to say.
I want to tell the center, I heard 60 days. Is that not correct?
I haven't made a motion yet.
But that's what you said earlier, 60 days.
That's what I was good with until the operator gave us a shorter timeframe.
30 days?
They said three weeks.
She said three weeks she can have the material.
I'm given an extra week. It's 25%.
So what the answer to the question was, "Can you do it within 60 days?" And answer was yes. Then there was something else added.
And the addition was, by the same person, was three weeks. It can be done in three weeks.
Yeah, but it was also said that they could get it here within that time. That doesn't allow any room for transportation errors or anything else.
That's why I'm going 30 days.
I would like to see you go back to the 60 days that you initially put out there.
Been two years. That's another 30 days.
Want to go ahead and make the motion, or?
Yeah, I'm going to make the motion. So, Mayor, I'd like to move that we accept these amendments as written with the provision that the sound wall needs to be up within 45 days.
Second.
Wait, it's not an amendment.
Just so I can...
Let's let the councilor speak.
Just to clarify, you're saying that the year...
All right, go ahead.
You're moving to issue the amended permit conditioned on the sound wall being up in 45 days.
And this is why I'm a politician and not a lawyer. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And staff, too.
And staff to provide us with policy that would, a directive that would keep these from stretching out over multiple years.
And do you have a motion on the variance for the unanimous consent of the property owners?
He has not made that, yeah. Let's do that in, can we do that in two separate motions?
Pieces?
Two separate motions.
You kind of have to do the unanimous consent first before you can issue the permit.
The permit. Okay, let's do it, all right.
All right, then I, then I move that we, we go ahead and approve the removal of the amended, amended, how do we, how do we say that?
It's an variance, isn't it?
Move to grant the variance.
Move to grant the variance on the unanimous consent.
Second.
Thank you, Rudy.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to remove the variance of the unanimous consent of property owners. We have a second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Gilmore, you want to, I want you to, all three, three of them, the directive be the last one, if you will.
Then we'll do the directive as a, as a third.
Yes, sir.
You got it, Mayor. So the second motion is that we, we approve the variance as written.
There's no variance.
I'm sorry, the...
Amendment.
I can't read today.
Issue the amended permit.
Issue the amended permit for the compressor with the proviso of that sound wall being in place within 45 days, and with the understanding that there will be a fine for not having an active permit after that. Does that, does that work?
That works.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore. I'm not going to repeat it. We got it in writing.
It's on video.
A second by Councilman Tierney. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
And the final motion is that we have the city manager develop a policy that eliminates these stretching out to a two-year period and gets this down into a manageable timeframe. If council needs to be brought in, then so be it.
Just to clarify, legal term of art, you mean an administrative directive and not a council policy?
That'd be lovely, an administrative director. And I'll go with that. So, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gilmore for an administrative directive to our city manager. A second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Make another motion, then I don't have to do any more motions tonight.
Okay. Next item is item three. Public hearing. Consideration of Proposed Fiscal Year 2014-2015 Budget Property Tax Revenue Increase and Property Tax Rate. In accordance with the city charter and state law, a public hearing is being held in, on the proposed fiscal year 2014-15 budget, property tax revenue increase and proposed property tax rate to provide an opportunity for citizen comment. The proposed fiscal year 2014-15 property tax rate is .436086, which is a decrease from the current .44021 tax rate. The proposed budget includes changes made by the city council at the budget workshops held on August 9th and on August 18th. The first public hearing was held on September 2nd. This will be the second and final public hearing. An agenda item to adopt the budget property tax and revenue increase and property tax rate will be on September 15th, 2014, council meeting at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Representatives will be conduct the public hearing, which we did. Do I, we need a motion and vote on this?
Close.
A motion, entertain a motion. Councilman Tierney, motion closed.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to close public hearing by Councilman Tierney, a second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item four is public hearing, consideration of a request to annex a 156.097 acre tract, generally located south of State Highway 121, north of Parker Road, along Josie Lane, east of Crata Road, and west of Plano Parkway at the request of the landowners, Liberty Bankers, Life Insurance Company, and Graham Mortgage Corporation. On July 21st, 2014, Liberty Bankers Life Insurance Company and Graham Mortgage Corporation, owners of approximately 156.097 acres within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, generally located south of State Highway 121, north of Parker Road, along Josie Lane, east of Crata Road, and west of Plano Parkway, as more particularly described in the met and bounds, description available in the agenda backup materials titled "The Property", filed with the city secretary a petition requesting the property be annexed by the city. The city is authorized by law to annex the property, but must hold two public hearings regarding annexation prior thereto. The public hearing represents the first, this public hearing represents the first of two public hearings necessary before the annexation can be formally approved. Notice this public hearing has been properly posted. Recommendations that council conduct the first of the two proposed public hearings. So, Councilman Durham, entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Durham, a second by Councilman Ferguson.
Are you not going to speak, John?
Yeah, Mayor, I do need to...
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were going to. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was going to ask for comments, so discussion, there we go.
Mayor and council, the statute that outlines the steps for annexation does require that the city notify the public of the...
the city notify the public of the service plan to be made available in this area. That... A copy of that plan was circulated at the meeting tonight. All services provided in the city of Lewisville today will also be provided to this area that's being considered for annexation. The... I will be making this statement again when we consider the second public hearing tonight. And just so that the public is aware, the reason these are back-to-back public hearings is because the developer that is working on this particular property has a closing date in early October. So to try to assist the developer in moving forward, we have placed them back-to-back, and that is also in compliance with state law.
And also, I failed to note, too, that we had a card filled out by Mr. Robert Miklos, who's with Centurion American here to answer, does not wish to speak, but is here to answer any questions if council might have of him. Is there any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, I guess I was going... You see, we're going to... It's okay. Item five is a public hearing, consideration request to annex 156.97 acre tract generally located south of State Highway 121, north of Parker Road, along Josie Lane, east of Crata Road, and west of Plano Parkway at the request of landowners Liberty Bankers, Life Insurance Company, and Graham Mortgage Corporation. This public hearing represents the second of two public hearings necessary before the annexation can be formally approved. Notice this public hearing was properly posted. Ms. Barron?
Once again, the services provided in this area being considered for annexation will be exactly the same as those services offered in existing Lewisville.
Thank you. Councilman Vaughn, entertain a motion to close.
May I make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion to close public hearing by Councilman Vaughn, second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor Protem Gilmore, may I ask you to take over, please, sir?
Ma'am. We'll now open the visitor-citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Just one moment. Seeing no requests, we'll go ahead and move along to the consent agenda. There was a request earlier in the evening by the mayor to remove two items.
Nine and 10.
Nine and 10, but I'm going to assume that we don't need to do that, and we'll just go ahead and move forward. So I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Councilman Tierney.
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Consent agenda passes.
And where are we? 13.
Excellent. Regular hearings. Item 13, consideration of a variance to Lewisville Code of Ordinances 2-201 waiver of Frederick P. Herring Recreational Center rental fees in the amount of $1,200, approval of alcohol service, and approval of in-kind marketing support related to Discover Local event to be held October 30, 2014, as requested by Lewisville Area Chamber of Commerce. Lewisville Area Chamber of Commerce will hold its annual Discover Local Southern Denton County Business and Community Expo on Thursday, October 30, at the Herring Recreation Center. The event is expected to draw 1,000 visitors and participants. The chamber is requesting a waiver of facility rental fees and permission for one or more expo exhibitors to serve samples of their alcoholic beverage products. Recommendations that city council approve the variance, approve the alcohol service, and approve in-kind event support as set forth in the caption above. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Approval by Councilman Tierney, second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. By the way, if you don't have anything to do on October 30, go to this event because they do a great job. Thank you to the chamber for going out there and promoting our local business. Item 14, consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 4-28, temporary structures and uses regarding a temporary building for classroom use to be located at 162 Houston Street as requested by Pastor Ronald Elder on behalf of the Solid Rock Baptist Church, the property owner. The Solid Rock Baptist Church has owned and operated the building located at 162 Houston Street since 2001. The church is in the process of raising funds for a permanent addition but would like to be able to use a portable building as a temporary solution. The church obtained design approval from the OTDRC on July 28, 2014. The request for the temporary use of a portable building needs city council approval. Five similar variances requests have been granted since 2010. Recommendations to city council, consider the variance request, provided that the temporary classroom be used for Solid Rock Baptist Church purposes only and be removed in five years or earlier should the church complete the proposed expansion or vacate the premise. We have a presentation by Mr. Cleve Joyner. He's our Director of Neighborhood Services, and Mr. Ronald Elder, Solid Rock Baptist Church. Mr. Joyner? Or is that going to be Mr. Ferris?
It looks like Mr. Ferris.
It does. It does, although, you know, maybe, maybe we've got some twin thing going on.
Zoom in a little bit here. It's a picture of the existing church facility at 162 Houston Street. It's been there a number of years, just south of the post office. Again, this is an example showing a minute of location map of where this is. This is the site. You see the post office to the north, and the church owns the property outlined in yellow. They need to expand. They need to have some classroom capabilities, so they're wishing to put a portable building on the west side of the lot, which would be basically in this area for classroom, church classroom purposes. Again, north is down, so this... The portable building is in the gray on your screens, and it's just to the west of the main church facility or church sanctuary. The request is for up to five years or when they do the church expansion. And of course, the variance is that this is not a building that's put on a permanent foundation in compliance with the International Building Code. Therefore, the variances are being requested. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Mr. Elder is here and is available for questions, but does not wish to speak at this time. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve by Councilman Durham, second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion?
I'll just ask a question for clarification. Move to approve with the conditions that are in the recommendation or without the conditions?
I'll leave that to Councilman Durham.
All, everything as presented.
Thank you.
Councilman Vaughn, are you good with seconding that?
Yes. Yes, I am, sir. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Look forward to seeing the church grow, and thank you, Mr. Elder, for bringing this to the city. Next, we have item 15, consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6103(c)(2a), access spacing regarding driveway spacing requirements related to the proposed Legend Express Car Wash located at 232 East Round Grove Road as requested by Ryan Sextro, Cobb, Fendley, and Associates Incorporated on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a 1.59 acre lot zoned light industrial within the Campbell Ranch Edition located in the southeast quadrant of East Round Grove Road and State Highway 121 Business. City council approved a specific use permit for the proposed car wash on February 3, 2014. Legends Express Car Wash currently owns the vacant property and is in the process of permitting a new car wash. Staff has reviewed and approved the engineering site plan subject to the city council approval of a variance to reduce the minimum driveway spacing requirement of 230 feet between the existing driveways to construct a driveway on East Round Grove Road. Recommendation that the city council approve the variances set forth in the caption above. Mr. Kelly, we have you here for giving us a quick presentation.
Good evening, council. Yes, we can talk about it a little bit. Here's a diagram showing the location. The ordinance does require driveway spacing 230 feet. I think I'm upside down. Along FM 3040. With the existing meeting and opening that was built by Tech dot and associated left turn lanes already existing, this created a situation where there were no driveways that lined up with the opening on the south side. There's existing driveway to the church on the east side. It was 33 feet away, and it's 104 feet to the west with the adjacent driveway there. We have presented this to Tech dot as well for permitting. They're in favor of this request. We're still working out some final details with them. They have also dictated that they do not want a deceleration lane for this driveway. So we have worked that out with the applicant as well. So is there any questions about that?
Did they say why they didn't want a deceleration lane?
They felt like there's an existing decel lane to the driveway further to the west. They decided they did not want to extend it. They didn't give me all the exact details. We were originally requesting one and had presented it to Tech dot as such.
Wow. Shock and surprise.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Ronnie Corbin is here. He is available for questions but does not wish to speak on this item. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll do it. Move to approve the variance as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Vaughn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, consideration of two variances to the Lewisville City Code, Section 9.5-92, paving regarding driveway width and turning radii and driveway spacing requirements related to the La Casita Restaurant located at 527 East Main Street as requested by Brian Hall Clay Company Incorporated on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a .152 acre lot zoned Old Town Mixed Use II within the Keely Edition. The property owner is proposing to convert the existing single-family home into a restaurant. Staff has reviewed and approved the Old Town Development Plan subject to the city council approval of the two variances. A, to maintain the existing driveway width of 12 feet and existing eight-feet curb radii, and B, to maintain the existing driveway spacing of one foot from the existing driveway to the west. Staff recommendation that the city council approve the variances as set forth in the caption above.
As you stated in the request, it is an existing home. It's located on East Main Street between Linder Street and River Street. They wish to redevelop it into a restaurant. It does meet all the requirements set for the existing driveway. The first variance request is to maintain the existing driveway width of 12 feet. The existing turning radius is eight feet on each side. The... We are in support of the request because they're really... Due to the location of the home or the business, I guess you could call it now, there's really no way of moving the driveway and making this development work. It does meet all the parking requirements. There is parking along the street as well. So we're in support of keeping the driveway as is with the 12-foot width and the eight-foot radii. There's only four parking spaces on site, so we really don't see the traffic impact or issues that would possibly generate. The other request is the spacing of the driveway. So to the property to the west, the existing driveway, essentially the radii are touching. There may be one foot of tangent between the two drives, but it's an existing condition. We feel like it's something that we cannot... The applicant can make or improve, so we're in favor of this request as well.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Thank you, sir. Mr. Brian Hall, he has indicated that he wishes to speak in support. Is that Mr. Hall? There you are, sir. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. Brian Hall, 600 Wentworth, Richardson, Texas. I just wanted to make myself available for questions if you had any about this particular variance request. We have gone through the Old Town Review Process and gained approval of that previous to these variances, so we're ready to start construction.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? Thank you for coming. Really appreciate it, sir. And by the way, the name of this Mica... Yeah, it's a great name. I'll take a motion.
Move to approve per the caption. Second.
Motion from Councilman Durham, second by Councilman Tierney. Yeah, I'm moving them. I'll just mash them all together today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes. Item 17, update on Old Town Park Plaza timeline. And I think the gentleman we have to grace us at this moment would be Mr. Backus.
All right. My man. Mayor and council, this is a update as requested by Mayor Euclid and most of those members on the council to see where we are on the project. Project is delayed. It is behind schedule, but really not. Our original schedule was for April 30, the completion date of this year, and with seven completed change orders to date, extended that timeline on the project to August 12. The August 12 date does not include additional change orders that are forthcoming that will extend the project completion date into mid to late September. Our contractor, J.C. Commercial, has provided us with a new schedule, and that schedule is to have substantial completion by Western Week. It's pushing the date, but it is to September 25. He hopes to have the project substantially completed. That does not mean that all items will be completed, like irrigation. There'll be some shrubbery. We have 33,000 plantings that go in this park. A lot of those will not be done by the 25th. The two major focuses for Western Week is the stage and the grass area. Those are two areas that we hope to have finished. And we do have provisions that if we do not complete it, we can move those two events outside and make it work. Questions?
Just a couple of questions. 146 RFI's and 75 FC's. Would you comment on both those numbers?
Actually, there are 148 RFI's as of today. But these are generally questions that contractor and/or engineer or we have, as far as the city project managers, to clarify the plans, make sure we're putting in what we need to put in. And this is information that cities generated. And this is information that's either generated from the architect or the civil engineer or my staff.
Okay.
It's fairly normal on some types of projects, not on road projects, but building projects, we have structural projects, sticks-and-bricks projects, excuse me, are ones that we have some questions from time to time.
Okay, that's 75 field changes?
Seventy-five field changes. Some of those changes include a change from one aspect to another without a cost. Some are deducts, and those are just, again, field changes that Randy Johnson or myself make to keep the project going.
Okay. And then briefly, could you tell us about the change requests?
I'm sorry?
Change requests?
Change order request?
Change orders, sorry.
Those change orders, again, we have seven that have been approved and satisfied and processed through the pay process or estimates that we have. Those are within the bid tabs or in the construction estimates that we have today. We have approximately seven additional change orders that we are working on at this time, and that's where the additional days will go from August 12th on into mid-September. Those range from concrete work to addition of stones, some other items that are coming in. These are all fairly minor change orders in this last time, but they are time-consuming.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment.
Absolutely.
Just real quickly, I've been involved in the city of Lewisville for just about 15 years, and this has to be the largest debacle that I've ever seen from a city standpoint. I certainly don't want to get into any finger-pointing by any means. What I want is this project complete as everybody in this room does, and I would like to call for, once this project is complete, to get some type of a full investigation, full report to detail exactly what went wrong. With an April completion date, now we're pushing the end of September. I think we really need to make sure, ensure that whatever is going on, whatever did go on, to cause this type of delay, that it doesn't happen again in the city of Lewisville.
Absolutely, Councilman. City staff certainly shares your frustrations and the rest of the council's frustrations with this project. I think once this project is complete, it will be an incredible asset for the city. However, the time period that it's taken is unacceptable. It has been a very difficult project. There were certainly things that occurred that we did not expect early in the construction process, but we will be reviewing this process to try to make sure we take all steps possible to avoid this type of situation in the future.
Thank you.
Other comments? And then we'll go ahead and move right into reports. Nika? Bob? Nothing coming up in parks? There's a pile coming soon. Chief? Melinda? Assistant chief?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Carol? How's the lake?
We're losing a little more water because we just need rain, so, but we're going to make this summer, that's the good news.
We'll make it through. We didn't have any of those tight days where we're running off of the water towers alone?
No, sir, we did not have to do that this summer. Really enjoyed that.
Good deal. Jean? Brandon? Ms. Ferris? Mr. Backus? Anything you'd like to add after that?
No.
Councilman?
Nothing.
No, sir.
No? Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir.
If you would, there's plenty to talk about.
Well, we've got all kinds of time. First of all, just a reminder again about October 30th, the Discover Local event at the Herring Center. If you haven't gone to one of those before, it's a great opportunity to get to know a lot of the local businesses and products they have to offer, and it's just a lot of fun, so I encourage people to go. MCL Grand Activities, we have a stage show, God of Carnage. I'm told it is not a musical version of tonight's oil and gas study. It's September 12th through the 14th, three shows. There'll be No Sad Songs, the last concert of Hank Williams on September 20th, one show. That's by Texas Family Musicals. Concerts, and you'd think I could pronounce this, this lady's actually a student of a longtime friend of mine, Anna Nitzer Gorodzova, I got that right. Selections from Beethoven, Prokofiev, and Shostakovich on September 19th, that's next Friday, at, presented by Lewisville Lake Symphony, MCL Grand, 7:30 PM. It's the opening concert of the season. She was the winner of a international competition that the symphony conducted. Public events, Healthy You continues this time around at Strong Bones, Strong Bodies, September 11th. We have a town hall meeting that's conducted by State Representative Ron Simmons on September 15th, and of course, we've got Western Days coming up on the 26th and the 27th. Always have those Friday acoustic jam sessions. Always look out to see if anybody's decided they're going to go jam with the acoustics. Art exhibits, Quanta Parker Exhibit will be there for Western Days. The exhibit opens on the 26th and is there through November 8th, and that's in the main art gallery. And then in the north corridor, the Western Way is an exhibit presented by Visual Arts League, same period of time, September 26th through November 8th. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Vaughn?
Nothing, Mayor Protem.
Nothing? Nothing?
Nothing, Mayor Protem.
No, I'm sorry, I was working my way down the table.
Oh.
Sorry. Officer? We're blessed to have you here. Thank you, appreciate it. I'm not nearly as good at saying thank you as our other mayor, but I'll try, try my best. Thank you for being here. Just have one note to add is our green centerpiece in Lewisville, part of that is an organization called Lila, the Lewisville Lake Environmental Learning Area. They have a phenomenal fundraiser coming up, and if anybody does any type of running or walking or hiking, this is a great opportunity. It's called That Dam Half, and it is a half marathon and 5K. The 5K will be at Lake Park. The half marathon will literally run across the spine of the dam, which I don't know how they did that because the Corps of Engineer doesn't let anyone near that dam. But that'll be Sunday, October 19th, and you can find out more information at thatdam, D-A-M-half, dot com. So with that, we are going to convene into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.074, Personnel Annual Staff Reviews, City Manager Donna Barrett, City Secretary Julie Hindsey, City Attorney Elizabeth Plaster, Chief Municipal Court Judge Brian Holman, alternate municipal court judges, and Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations.
I might drag this out, never know.
Action to be taken, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Backus?
In a second. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
See you later.
Aye.
Yeah.